All right, sorry, we're a little late. This is the March 25th, 2025 meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission. Beautiful Larkspur City Council Chambers in downtown Larkspur. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Campbell is not here. Commissioner Hull, Commissioner Swisher.
Here.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Here.
And Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
You have a form.
All right, excellent. First, this is a call for any public comments of matters not on the agenda.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the Community Development Director's report, anything?
I don't have anything to report. I guess I would, we'll just make, we did get a building permit application for our new restaurant across the street. So that's kind of exciting. It's going to involve planning review at the old Fabrizio's.
Oh.
It'll involve some level of planning review, definitely has to go through the Heritage Preservation Board. So it may or may not come before you depending on what it needs.
Let me guess, it's Italian?
No.
Oh, wow. Tremendous. Being half Italian, I mean, I'm all for good Italian restaurants. But, all right, so the next item on is a consent calendar, and this is 39 Corte Toluca Green Bray, APN 070241-06, R1, First Residential Zoning District, Kimberly and Mark Resnick, owners applicants, DR/FAR21-11, one-year extension of time to June 2026 for design review and floor area ratio exception for substantial remodel, and 1,424 square foot additions to residence.
So this item, we're recommending approval of the extension, and you could approve that by making a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Can I have a motion?
Just out of curiosity, that was one that we heard.
And denied.
And denied, and City Council overturned.
Approved it.
Interesting.
I know, right?
Okay. Can I have a motion for the extension?
I have moved, we approved the extension.
I'll second.
That roll call?
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell is absent, so the motion passes.
All right, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is 30 Owlswood Drive slash 21 Chevy Chase, Elias Horrit, applicant, Frank Edwards owner, APN 021-152-30, R1, First Residential Zoning District, PLN 23-45. This is a request for Planning Commission approval of the following permits. Designer view to permit the construction of a new 1,890 square foot two-story residence with an attached 500 square foot garage, and attached 468 square foot junior ADU or accessory dwelling unit. The total size of the structure would be 2,864 feet. A setback variance to allow a street-side yard setback of zero feet where 10 feet is required by code. The variance would permit a staircase to be used for emergency access to connect from the residence to the Chevy Chase right-of-way. All other portions of the residence meet the setback requirements. A natural state variance to allow a natural state of 0.67, 5,138 square feet, where 0.86,129 square feet is required by code due to the slope of the lot. A floor area ratio exception, that math is off. That's where 0.8, I think you meant 612 square feet, not 6,129. Well, no. Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is that the point, the point, a natural state of 0.67. Okay, yeah, yeah, right, 6, I'm sorry. So their natural state, okay, the floor area, that's where I'm, floor area ratio exception to allow a floor area ratio of 0.373, 2,864 square feet, where a floor area ratio of 0.10, I was looking ahead, 783 square feet is allowed by code, as well as a slope use permit because 495 cubic yards of cut and fill would be taken out. So just to set up, I have to recuse myself for this because I live within 500 feet of the property, so I'm recused.
You'll have to step.
And I will have to step down, yes.
You.
I'm gonna sit and drink my soda. I guess Natasha, or who's the chair, Liam's not here, so.
Do you want to do it? You want me to do it? Hey, yeah. Can we please have the staff report?
Sure, yes, thank you. Okay. All right, good evening, commissioners, as you've just heard, this is PLN 2345 for 21 Chevy Chase or 30 Owlswood. And they are requesting, I won't get into it in a second, but designer view, floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit, and two variances. For a bit of context, here's the project location, the overhead view is on the left, and then the view from Owlswood is on the right. That would be the view that you would have entering the property going towards the garage. And I guess before I get into the description, to back up, this item was before the commission at its November hearing. It was a study session at that time where you reviewed the project, took public comment, and provided feedback to the applicant. The feedback at that study session revolved around the reduction in the size of the residence, reducing some of the proposed retaining walls, and just generally complying with some of the design guidelines that were called out at the time. So the revised project before you proposes to construct a new 2,864 square foot residence garage and JADU on a currently vacant site. As I mentioned, it would require approval of designer view, floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit, and two variances. Here is the site plan, you can see the structure, the main structure here, and then to the left is the garage. I tried to alter the image to get it to show up a little better for you on the overhead, hopefully it's a little more legible. And then just as a bit of a comparison, I've got the previous plan and the proposed plan, both the site plan and the floor plans for you this evening. So on the left, on the right, excuse me, is the old plan, and on the left is the current plan. And you can see how it's been reduced in size, and there's no longer a no longer a large retaining wall proposed to create usable yard area, there is now a roof deck that connects the garage structure and the main home. And here are the proposed floor plans. And this is the upper floor with the patio roof deck. And then this is a comparison again, so in this one, the previous version is on the left, and the current proposal is on the right. You can, this is a little easier to see how the living area has been reduced, I think it's approximately 250 square feet reduction. And then here's a comparison of the second stories. And then here are the proposed elevations, the bulk of the residence would be graded into the lot over here, and then you've got the garage and JADU kind of at the forefront. The view, the northeast view would be the view from Owlswood, northwest is what you would see if you were on Chevy Chase. And then the southeast elevation is very minimal, and it faces an adjacent neighbor. And the southwest, that's from the rear of the structure, if you're looking from farther back on Chevy Chase towards the property. And the applicant did provide a couple renderings, I think, which helped to illustrate kind of the bulk of the proposed residence and the design. Can give it a little bit more context for the, a little bit better context than the 2D elevations. So the project does require approval of a floor area ratio exception. Due to the slope of the lot, the minimum allowed, or the maximum allowed floor area is 0.05. The project is requesting a floor area ratio of 0.37, that's the 2,854 square feet. It would be the fifth largest floor area of the surrounding 35 properties. However, of the 35 properties, 28 of them are larger than this particular lot. And the first of the two variances that are requested are setback variants, I think we discussed this last time. Due to emergency access concerns, the fire department is requiring a staircase that can access the property from Chevy Chase. So it will technically extend, you know, over the property line down to the right-of-way of Chevy Chase, giving it a zero-foot setback. This is the only portion of the project that doesn't meet the setback requirements. And the second variance is to the natural state requirement, so there is a percentage of every lot which must be kept open and permeable. And in this case, due to the slope of the lot, they have a particularly high natural state requirement of 80%, that's 6,129 square feet that would have to be kept permeable. And they are proposing a natural state, a natural state of 0.64 or 4,919 square feet. And they do need a slope use permit, there'll be approximately 495 cubic yards of cut and fill, pretty much all of it to level out a pad for the proposed residence. And you've received, I think now technically you've received five public comments, we did get one that was sent to you just about 20 minutes before the meeting. I don't know if you've gotten that. So I'll say there was five comment letters received, one was a comment letter in support from an adjacent neighbor, and then the four others, I believe, are all from other adjacent neighbors to the project who are generally opposed to the size and scale of the residence. They state that there are traffic and emergency access concerns, and there are concerns about the amount of grading required to build the residence as designed. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval, and the Class 3 CEQA exemption. This concludes my staff report, I'm available for comments or questions should you have them. And the owner is here in person, and the architect is joining us via Zoom this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Do you have any questions for staff?
I, just out of curiosity, do you have the square footage of the original one that we looked at?
Yes, let me pull that up here.
And that didn't have an ADU, right?
No, it did.
It did, okay. Okay, well, I don't have the exact, I can do a little napkin math here, but this is a 244 square foot reduction, so it would have been just a hair over 3,000 square feet.
I just want to make sure I have all the public comments, and I'm trying to work off my phone here. There's one, from one comment in support, and then there's, I see two emails from the same last name, 29 McKernan, right? So that's two of the comments, right?
Yes. And you should have gotten one forwarded from Ted Ridgeway, and that came in this afternoon.
Fran McKernan?
Yes, there's Fran and Jay McKernan, I don't know the full name.
Yeah, I see that, right, I saw those two, and then I saw, I think the one I'm missing is the one you just mentioned.
Yes, there was one submitted by Jack McKernan, and that came in at 6:31, so if you haven't checked your email recently.
Tonight?
Yes.
Oh, that's why I missed it. Okay, can I use this for a second? Okay, so I've not had a chance to review this one, and then I saw the quick, there was a short one that just came in a few moments ago. Oh, no, that is 6:31, oh, I see.
You have the Ted Ridgeway one?
There's three from, okay, I see. So that's the one I see because it's short, right? The last one, also from Jack McKernan, and then the longer one, okay. I will try and review this really quick. But I also had a question about emergency vehicle access. So if an ambulance or some other emergency vehicle had to access this property, how did they, how would, listen, there's an emergency at the property, how does that work then?
So the staircases are a requirement from the fire department because they can't get a fire truck up Owlswood and turn it around in that, that kind of tight configuration they have up there. They can utilize Chevy Chase because there is kind of a cul-de-sac there at the rear. In terms of an ambulance, I don't know if an ambulance would use Owlswood, or if it would just use Chevy Chase and go up the staircase.
But you're saying if an ambulance goes up there, Owlswood, it can't turn around and come back out?
A fire truck can't turn around.
A fire truck can't turn around and come back out?
So that was a requirement from, from the fire department.
Oh, I see.
Their choices were essentially to install a residential turnaround, which is very large and would eat up a majority of the lot, or to install the staircase.
So if an ambulance came in and they can't, with a fire truck, because they usually come, they would have to climb up those stairs?
Potentially, yeah, I don't know about an ambulance's ability to make it up there, but that's certainly a fire truck.
Okay, that would probably be a question for the applicant, I'm just curious to know, like, if you had, if you had a, you know what, you'll have your chance, but I just something maybe you can address if there's an emergency, and I've got a feeling we addressed, we talked about this in the last meeting too, is if there's an emergency at the site, how would that be handled? Or I guess, in addition, like if a fire truck has to get up there because there's a fire in that street, like what, how, like, I'd be curious to know, like, how, maybe not even on that particular property, but just to get further down that street, what would happen? Like, how can it go all the way down, turn around and come back? I'm curious to know just how a fire truck would be able to access that road if there was a fire somewhere along the road.
On Owlswood or Chevy?
On Owlswood, Chevy Chase, I know you can turn around at the end, but to get to the property, it sounds like an ambulance or some emergency vehicle, emergency personnel would have to climb up those stairs. But if there's a fire up that hill, what would happen to? So, yeah, if you would address that in your presentation, that would be great. And for those latecomers, we have a commissioner absent and a commissioner who's recused. So that's why this roof is up here, and that's why I'm chairing just this one portion of the meeting. Do we have any other questions for staff?
I have one, you, make sure I understand, you said that it's the fifth largest house square foot-wise, but not the largest, like the 35th largest lot?
It's, it's the fifth, it has the fifth highest floor area ratio of the surrounding 35 properties, but of those 35 properties, it's the seventh smallest property.
On the lot size, not the house?
Yes, on the lot size, yes, yes.
That's what was, I was like, okay, wait, what? All right, that makes sense now.
Any other questions?
No.
No. Okay, well, let's have the applicant make their presentation, please, thank you.
And just so you know, Elias does have his hand raised, I don't know if you, who you'd like to go.
Oh, yeah, I guess he's the professional, so maybe he can get into it if he has something more to say, and sure, and I can just backfill and answer any questions that the.
Sure, you're Mr. Edwards, right? You're Frank Edwards, you're the owner of the property?
Yes, I am, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Elias, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Hi, all, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Frank, I'll just speak to technical items, and then I can also, if I can also mute myself, if that's okay, if I can just stay on here if anything else comes up. I did want to quickly speak to just the couple technical questions that were just now asked in regards to emergencies on the upper road that, in short, isn't necessarily our responsibility of the houses above us. For our own structure, an ambulance would easily be able to either go up the stairs or arrive in our driveway. The turnarounds are extremely large because, as you can imagine, a fire truck turnaround is extremely large. So they have these accessways that they say are comparable to a fire truck turnaround. So for us, it's a staircase because it's an extremely sloped site. On a lot of sites, what you see is you see alley access, you might see a roadway, or the driveway might become part of the turnaround. We opted to not do the driveway as a part of a turnaround because we're already talking about cut and fill, we're staggering the structure, we're trying not to obstruct the site too much, which is why we've taken this route with fire access for our site. For houses that are above us on our road, our project actually does not affect them at all. In all honesty, they most likely do not meet fire codes, as many of these fire codes and turnaround ratios were not required when houses were being laid out, previous structures were being built. So I can't speak to structures that are above us, or if each of their structures meet fire codes, but our structure will absolutely meet all fire codes. And then also, when we just talk about the house size, I do just want to quickly note, we're talking about conditioned space, but we're actually talking about two units here. So we're not just talking about one main home when we're talking about floor area ratio. We are talking about a home, we are also talking about a JADU, which is another unit, and then we are also talking about a garage. So when we are thinking about total space, it's more than just one home that happens to be this large number in the neighborhood. We are actually a home and a JADU. So those are just two comments I had, and then if there are any other questions in regards to the letters that were sent in or concerns from neighbors, I'm happy to answer those as well, but I think I'll wait for those maybe to be asked.
Thank you very much, would you like to supplement?
Yeah. My name's Frank Edwards, as I, as you pointed out, I am property owner, and thank you for having me, I appreciate it. I mean, I thank you for all the folks that showed up, and I did get the comments. And I appreciate all the feedback that I'm getting there through the neighbors. Unfortunately, I've done outreach, and I've only had a few neighbors that have actually, who have talked to me and sat down with me. I provided that dialogue to the, to the city. But I'll just put it simply, I'm just trying to build a home for my, for my family, I have two kids and my partner. And, yeah, that's all we're trying to do. I mean, I think there's a housing shortage, and I've taken the difficult task of trying to build a home for my family, but also be a part of the solution and not, not the problem. And this is hard. And it's not an easy path, but I'm having all the ups and downs, I'm still having fun doing it, and I'm excited to do it, and I want to be a part of this, this community. So, yeah, that's, I don't have a big presentation, that's it. Want to keep it short, sweet, and be respectful of all your time, and I'm happy to answer the questions. I'd like to elaborate as far as the fire and emergency stuff.
And to quickly just add on to that really, really quickly, Frank has done more work than I've seen any homeowner do on their end in regards to the project, reaching out to planning, understanding the neighborhood, reaching out to neighbors well more than what's beyond required, reaching out and having those conversations with fire to understand how do I make this a safe site? How do I make this neighborhood safer? How do I add value? How do we make sure we don't do anything that's going to cause a traffic jam or be dangerous? He has gone the extra mile with every single department and stepped along this way. And I think it just speaks so highly to, like, the value added to this project and his value added to this community.
Thank you for that comment. So I've had numerous conversations with the fire department about emergency access and that, and then fire, what it looks like in fire conditions and removing things that are panel. So I'll just speak to the emergency access first, I think that was the most important question. I had a lot of dialogue back and forth with the fire inspector. Originally, they wanted the turnaround, but a turnaround was just not possible with that size lot where it is. We really, really tried to make that work, but it basically would require a lot more square footage, or excuse me, square yards of material moved out, and it would basically just take up the entire site to have any type of turnaround that they wanted there. So I had a lot of conversations with the fire inspector, and then I got the fire chief involved, because when my original due diligence on this property, I spoke to the fire marshal chief, and he said, listen, all you need to do, what I suggest you do is switch the address to 21 Chevy Chase, and then access will come from there, and that's where our fire and emergency vehicles will come from, and that will solve your problem as far as emergency access. And, you know, obviously, as a homeowner, you have to understand that that limits your access, obviously, to these merchant services, but there are plenty of homes that have those conditions where they have stairs that get to the property. And that was just a discussion and a resolution that I had with the fire department, and said, okay, listen, we'll change the address to 21 Chevy Chase, and then access will be from that, from that street, and then that's where fire will go, and ambulance, and so, so forth. So I had a lot of discussions with them, and that's ultimately were resolved to. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
And then I'd just like to add that they came back with a lot of conditions to remove trees, there's a lot of bay laurels that are there, those are fire-prone, and they're not native, and so they've asked me to, as far as that project, obviously, there's all these little, there are the wooie and all this other stuff that you have to, that I have to work with. And so we've been very diligent about what trees when you remove, and so we'll actually make the site safer in a sense, because we'll be moving a lot of these fennel trees are on my property. And then obviously, I'll be responsible for that property and making sure that it's maintained and removed the brush that's there. So, yeah, we've been pretty thorough, at least from a safety standpoint, from a merchant standpoint and a fire standpoint.
Great, thank you, do we have any questions for the applicant?
I don't know. So making the address 21 Chevy Chase, in my mind, that means, you know, in theory, the garage is on Chevy Chase, the front of the house is Chevy Chase, and it seems like really all that's on Chevy Chase is that stairwell. So what about turning that around so that you don't have access from Owlswood? That your access is solely on Chevy Chase, for you, not just fire?
So there's, there's a history with this property, and a former owner of the property tried to do driveway access from, I think they actually had more property, because there's actually my property, there's a bit of land that the city owns now, that's between me and Chevy Chase. And I think it's relatively a trivial thing to just have a staircase, but building and maintaining things and having retaining walls and all that stuff, the city then starts to kind of say, no, that's not, I mean, we could do it, but then it's difficult, and it's not something that we want to ensure, and there's a lot of barriers to that when I talk to the public works about it. So, and then as I mentioned previously, there was someone who was trying to build something, and they came up with that, okay, we'll put a driveway that leads up and easy peasy, and, and the response community was not, it wasn't taken very well. And so I did go that route because of previous neighbors complaining about that, not wanting that. And then it worsens, adds to the square footage of, or the, discovering the cubic yards that you're removing. You just, I just try and remove the least amount of dirt from that space, and it just made, just seemed to be practical to do it that way. Did that answer your question, please?
Yes. Brock, do you have any questions?
And you have, you provided four parking spots, is that correct?
Yes, he meets all the parking requirements.
Okay.
And then what I'll say, sorry, I didn't mention that, because you brought the parking requirements, I did enlarge the driveway a little bit, widen it, because the fire wanted it. Even though there's not the intent to access the property with an emergency vehicle that way, I've added additional square footage there, so that if there is an emergency vehicle that needs to get up there, they have a little more wiggle room to turn around, and so I've increased it by, I don't remember what the square footage is, but we've also done that for the fire department.
I have one other question, so as far as you know, there's never been a summer cottage or anything on this?
No.
Property, okay.
No.
So I have some questions that staff may, it's addressed to both of you. Now that you're up here, maybe it'd be good for you to address, and staff may jump in as well. But, I mean, when I, when I went down there and looked at the site, that is an extremely steep slope. And I was actually blown away that anybody would want to build on that because it's so steep. So my initial reaction was, how are you going to do it? Is it, what's going to be the erosion, what's going to be the water runoff? What about if there's some kind of landslide? Now, when I read the staff report and I read the reports that you've done, you've clearly gone through all the steps. And it's sort of on you, because you're going to be putting your family in there. But that, I guess that's what I want to be able to do today, is be 100% comfortable and sure that if a property goes onto that site, trees get removed, you know, the roots of the trees are going to be removed that are holding that earth to the ground, you know, we have all the storms here now with the atmospheric rivers coming. That house is not something going to slide down the hillside, and there's not going to be an issue on Chevy Chase at the bottom. So I can address that to you, or I can address that?
I would say, I had Alex run a report for me that was like, instead of 300 foot radius, it was like 600 square foot radius. And there are, I don't know, I remember how many, but there are a fair amount of homes that are 60% or greater that houses are built on. It's not, it's not unusual, given our circumstances and given the limited, limited real estate that's out there. So it's not unusual by any standards, particularly in the area, to try to develop something on that level, so that way.
And if I could, if I could add to it as well, actually, in fact, within recent years, the last 10 to 20 years, building codes have actually gotten so much stricter, as well as more intense soil testing is required. So before we build any structure, we're going to do soil testing to make sure that the type of structure that we build is ab- soil testing to make sure that the type of structure that we build is absolutely safe. Um, we're also working with civil engineers as far as runoff is concerned. Um, so the structure will not only will the structure be sound, but it will actually make the hillside more sound. And when you think about stormwater or runoff or some potential mudslide, the code requirements for site and civil details such as stormwater runoff, um, erosion control, all of that is actually more strict now than it has ever been. So not only are we making this site actually safer, but we are making all neighboring lots actually safer by putting a structure there compared to you know, the natural scape as it is.
Well, that's interesting. Okay.
Yeah, and we just, uh, so we've done homework there as you've, uh, as you've pointed out and talked to a lot of civil engineers and done our homework there as far as runoff impermeable and permeable areas and just making sure that we're accounting for all that. And I, and we've had the, the, as part of the process, we had to have the, the soil tested. And then it's just, um, there's a sandstone there pretty about five or six feet down. So it's a very good, um, from what I understand, this is the civil engineers telling me, I don't know anything about it, but they said this is a great uh, soil to be building on. So as far as I understand, it's a very, it's a, it's a good condition to be built on.
Okay, okay. I, I mean, you're right. There are definitely a lot of properties in Marin County that are only accessed by steps because they're so steep and and you know, you look at Sausalito and the houses on stilts and you know, there's, there are a lot of properties that are even steeper than yours. I, I do get that. Um, I just don't want to be part of the, I guess, responsibility, have any kind of responsibility on putting a home with a family in it on a hillside where it, there's some failure or some natural disaster at some point in the future. And I would hate to see that given what I, when I look at that property. So um, that's why I wanted to ask, look at you and ask that question, you know, it's like.
You see challenges, I see opportunities is basically, and I see a dream there and I see building a home there and I.
And you do have a pretty extensive geotech report.
Yes, yes, I do. I fortunately inherited that and, and they did a great job on that. So um, I don't know. I, I understand someone looking at it, looking at land and going, what is this guy thinking? Could you be totally right? But look, and that's opportunity too. And I, and I I think it's, you know, a great opportunity at the end of the day and a great opportunity to become part of this community.
All right. Thank you for addressing that. Any more questions? Any more questions for the applicant? No. Okay. Can we have public comment?
Do, do I have an opportunity to ask you all questions or is that later?
Oh, um, what kind of questions?
Well, so the stairs have come up. There's a variance part of that, you know, I think whatever the resolution of this, and if I have to go back and redesign stuff, I want some stuff settled. And I need solid feedback or something that says like, this is fine. Don't worry about this. Cause a lot of details that I have to like, and decisions I have to make down the way that affect the design. And so for instance, like the stairs, like the fire department's asked me to do that, you know, can, is there a general understanding like that's something that I don't need to address. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I add more access to Owl's Wood. It makes sense to how the property would be accessed. That's something that I would like some assurances that I don't have to like go back and address.
What, go back and address the stairs?
That, that I, that this is the way, this is the path forward and that this is fine.
Because we.
I have the end result here, if I can just maybe offer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're just addressing the variances.
Yeah, they, I mean, the, the end result of this meeting would be, I mean, should you get approved, Luke's be saying, yes, that that staircase configuration is fine. If it gets continued, then they could certainly offer feedback as to.
Yeah, that's what I said. If it gets continued, then that'd be, I want to walk away. If there are things to change and if there's comments that the public wants me to change, I'm amenable to, and I'm flexible to, to change. It's not my dream home. It's just a home. And if you all come back with feedback, what I need is I need specific feedback. The last time I was here, obviously there was a big raha with one of the homes that was presented and it took a long time and I really had a short time with you all. And I walked away with, hey, uh, make it smaller. And then I realized I went back and I'm like, what does that mean? Make it smaller? How much smaller? What is, what is fair? What do I do? Does it mean going below grade? Does it mean just making it smaller? So I need, if I walk away from here and it's a continuing thing that I have to fix things, then I need more concrete feedback from the commission uh, to, to do big changes.
Okay, we, we hear you on that and thank you for asking that question. Um, I will say, we're not going to design a home for you because we're not professional. Well, I guess we have one person here, but he's not here in that capacity. But we hear you that you want specific feedback and we will make sure that we in our, as part of our discussion, depending how that discussion goes, we will try and address that concern.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I just, I, it was just, I was sitting with my architect and I'm like, what does it, what does it mean? We, you know, we added stepping based on what the uh, planning was asked before and making it smaller, but I just, we need more, more direct feedback.
Yeah. And I would say also work with staff. Staff knows the codes. They know everything really, really well. They advise us as well. So that coming to us shouldn't preclude you at all from working with, with Alex and Elise and staff.
I, I understand that, but sometimes what happens is staff says, we're listening to the commission and then you say, we're listening to, so that you, you put me in like a constant loop of between the two groups. So that's not really a fair position for someone that's standing here trying to.
Okay. Well, let's hear how the rest of the meeting goes and we've got your comments on that. All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Sounds like we have someone in the room. Okay. And if you could introduce yourselves and um, can I just see how many comments, uh, how many people will be making comments tonight? One, two, three? Okay.
You've got a couple of hands on Zoom too, just so you know.
Okay. So maybe just limit your comments to five minutes. So thank you.
Shorter than five minutes.
Okay, great.
All right. Uh, so my name is Lewis Kimball and my wife and I and our two sons, we live at twenty three Owl's Wood Drive. And we're adjacent to that property just right down the street. We've lived there over twenty years. And it is a fantastic street, but definitely a bit of a unique street that way. And we really do sort of understand the project a little bit and what they're trying to do. But honestly, in our minds, we've believed a lot. It's just too small. And the house is just too large and doesn't fit with the, with the neighborhood. And then honestly, in addition to that, we're just very concerned about the safety uh, of of that street, of that neighborhood. When you add a large house to the complexity of what is already a very difficult street. Um, you know, Owl's Wood is like a one-way street. And yes, we have seen a fire uh, engine go up there. And obviously watching those guys back the fire engine down was unbelievable, but somehow they did do it. So it's super difficult to get emergency vehicles up there. And um, you know, the aesthetics to us, the house just seems too large to the rest of the houses in the, in the neighborhood. So it just doesn't work. We're also obviously concerned about the greater the hill, although I know you've discussed that today. Um, and how you build on those uh, grades. And then finally, certainly the overall being such a large house, the overall privacy to the other homes around it and how that would impact um, uh, of having a larger house up on a hill like that with the other homes around it. So in that mind, we sort of oppose the project the way it is currently designed based on the size that they're currently proposing and hope they'll consider with obviously your, your input there of making it perhaps a house that would more work in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have the next comment, please.
Thank you. My name is Lori Kimball. I'm Louis, Louis's wife and at twenty three Owl's Wood. And um, I can tell you that we've had ambulance, paramedics, um, fire truck all up our hill fifteen years ago when our son had an asthma attack in the middle of the night at age five. So um, what worries me and you mentioned, you know, how great this is and how there's a staircase on Chevy Chase, but that doesn't help me if we have an emergency on Owl's Wood, how does anything turn around up there? Cause there's a house up there, the stairway's down there. They're not going to come all the way from a stairway up to come over to our house. I don't understand how anyone could possibly turn around if there's another house at the end of that street. So that's my concern.
Can I ask you a question? Is, is then this house being built blocking access to your house or is?
Well, it's, it's blocking at the end. Like we have one house right now at the end of our street and we're able to turn around, but I'm just concerned about what else would be there, that there wouldn't be an easy turnaround. I'm concerned about emergency vehicles on Owl's Wood.
So you're, you're talking, it's not the house then, you're just talking about if they park cars on the street? Is that what?
Right. I'm just talking about any access that we don't have anymore because of it, how, how safe that would be. Like again, my husband said it's a one-way street. I can't imagine how anything could turn around if any other property was up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask that? My, I thought my understanding was that by, because the garage and the driveway are on Owl's Wood, that that is actually improving. Granted, it, it sucks in just overall, but that it would actually be a mild improvement for potential emergency service?
There would only be an expansion April, as you, or made that turn on Owl's Wood. The driveway improvements uh, would, would all be additional pavings. There would be additional area to use to pack up. I mean, if there's a car parked there, it would be contained, you know what I mean? But it would be contained on a driveway that doesn't exist right now.
Maybe helpful for that, for you, for you to understand that then. It sounds like if this house is constructed because they're putting a driveway in, that driveway is effectively expanding the portion of the street where that driveway is. So it gives more space for an emergency vehicle to get up, just for that section. So that actually wouldn't be a detriment. It might help. I think the risk, and this is where maybe you have to work with your neighbors here. You just don't want them blocking the street with any cars. If they, if there's, I don't know, your kids, I don't know how old you're, but if everyone has a car, um, you're going to have to be respectful of your neighbors. So that's, that's what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you.
Not to mention the renters that are going to be in the ADU. Where are they going to park?
Well, there's four parking spaces, right?
I, I didn't see that on the plans.
Can we confirm there's four parking spaces? That's what I heard tonight?
Parking spaces on the.
Okay.
Where are they located?
There's two in the garage and two in the driveway.
Could, could you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes. My, my name is John McCurn and uh, twenty nine Owl's Wood.
Okay.
We're the property directly adjacent to this. Um, we're, we are vehemently against this for many of the same reasons that have been expressed in this meeting as well as in the letters. And I, and I also respectfully disagree that this project will create an unsafe condition, not only for our home, but the homes above it and everything else. It is not making anything safe. I'm a registered engineer. I'm a commercial builder with, with very long experience in deep foundation studies. I'm, I'm questioning the, the estimate on the cut and fill. I think that's grossly underestimated. This will undermine the house above it. And quite frankly, this lot is not su- suitable for this size home. So I, I would support this project and, and um, the, the gentleman and his family that want to build the home, but they need to respect the rules of which you want to build that are already existing in the city ordinances. We're asking for four variances. It, you know, why even have the rules if you can have someone come and just not respect them? So this, this home needs to respect and build within the rules of what, what is there and then we can work together. And I, I would suggest we start there.
Thank you. Can I have a clarifying question with staff? So they've come in with a specified amount of um, cut and fill. Uh, are you able to check that and confirm that that's what they hold to or how does that work?
I mean, we, we, we do, we do everything off of the staff's recommendations. I mean, there's been comments back and forth. So everything we've calculated is working with the staff. We're not just picking up our own numbers. We're working with the staff on all of this.
All of the cut and fill calculations comes from their civil engineering team. So um, I would assume that they have a, a good understanding of, of the amount of cut and fill. I mean, whether or not there are you know, uh, additional cuts or, or less cuts needed that, you know, when they get out in the field, I, I couldn't tell you that. Yeah, I can only, I'm relying on information.
But if they have to get more, take out more earth, basically, do they have to come back to staff?
I mean, if you could require them to return if they exceed the cubic yards that are specified on this approval and require us to have a peer review of the calculation. Um, we don't have, we don't drill down that deep into what's counted. So I don't, there's what they call fluff factor. So the soil may expand as they're removing it. And there might be more off haul, you know, if they're just counting solid dirt as they're cut. Um, but that could be a condition of approval if you wanted that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have any comments on Zoom?
Uh, yes, there are a couple of hands raised on Zoom. The first one I saw was Ted. So Ted, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Okay, great. I hope you can hear me. Um, thanks for um, uh, supporting public commentary on this. Uh, certainly, uh, uh, I understand the desires of the applicant to build a house for uh, his family. It's a great community. I unfortunately don't think that this lot supports a house of this size. Um, and it may not be a commercially developable lot in that respect for a residential property. But I agree with all of the uh, objections my neighbors have raised. I think that it will make the surrounding properties less stable and more dangerous. But I want to focus on something that I believe should be in everyone's mind right now. Um, and that's the risk of fire and the Eaton fire and the Palisades fire and the Tubbs fire eight years ago, um, up in Santa Rosa, uh, were largely spread by dense residential construction, not trees, not um, uh, you know, shrubs. And this property, I disagree with the applicant on this point. This property will pack by our estimate five times as much flammable material, wood in construction materials as there are currently on the lot or would exist in a, what we would consider a moderately forested state. So this is not dense forest. It's, it's already been cut. Trees have been thinned. We estimate that it will put five times as much flammable material in a structure that will promote uh, you know, fire vortexes through heat and spread embers to the surrounding properties. I have a number of other objections my neighbors have mentioned, um, but that's the one I would leave you all with. Uh, is that this will uh, create an extremely high fire situation in a space that is today a fire break. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next hand up is Michael Reese. Should be able to unmute.
You guys hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, my name is Mike Reese. I live directly above the proposed property on two, two, three Marina Vista. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person to participate, but appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of thoughts here on Zoom. Um, look, the last thing I want to do is get in the way of Mr. Edwards fulfilling his plans, building a house. I know he's done a ton of work in service of making this happen. I've appreciated the conversations we've had during the process. But I have a lot of the same concerns which have been raised and worried about a bunch of things. And I just want, want to kind of get those out right now. Um, I, I'm worried about the noise and disruption and impact it will have on us living in our house during the months of construction. Cutting that deep into rock, I'm assuming is going to require some pretty substantial heavy equipment that's going to cause a, a ton of excessive noise and vibration. Both my wife and I work from home and this, this will all be within a couple of feet of our property line. I'm also worried about what this does to the aesthetics of the property with the removal of all those trees along our property line. We're going to be losing privacy. Now looking directly down at a new home beyond aesthetics, I worry about our investment and, and that home value will suffer. And I still don't understand how the removal of all of those trees is not going to harm the hill. And that's what I'm really concerned about. And it's what I voiced when, when we met last year on this topic. You know, what will this construction do to the structural integrity of the hill? Um, these plans require a pretty robust cutting into the hillside and deep. And this is the hillside my house sits on. So you were talking about worrying about uh, water. There's a house that's sitting right above there. And I know Mr. Edwards engineers indicate there is no apparent risk to structural integrity, which is great, but that doesn't surprise me as those engineers are working for Mr. Edwards essentially. So my concern, I think, is more properly directed to the staff to make sure that you're a hundred percent certain that this construction will not hurt the hillside and cause erosion or God forbid a slide. That your unbiased expertise concurs with Mr. Edwards engineers. And I'm asking for assurance. And I'm asking for assurance that everyone involved in this decision is 100% convinced that these plans will not harm the hill. Not just for runoff, but for my house sliding down on this. What gives me a little pause and gets me wondering if, if, if we've done the proper due diligence on that topic? If I understand correctly, the, the geo report that, that was provided, there was not extensive boring into the hill to really ascertain what you're dealing with. And I'm getting way beyond my area of expertise, but my uncle's an architect. And when I shared the plans with him, he was concerned that wanting to have a better understanding of the kind of the tilt of the strata. And I'm like, what the hell is that? And if I understand correctly, in layman's terms, I think that pertains to the fact that sedimentary layers originally laid down horizontally. But over time, tectonic movement frequently tilts that strata into kind of steep angles, which can result in instability, particularly during construction. And I think typically you drill multiple boardings at a given site to determine the tilt of the strata to best ascertain what you're dealing with to get a better assessment of risk. That, that's my understanding. And I don't think the geotech report, I think it just did one boarding on that. So if that's the case, how do we know for certain what the tilt of the strata is, or are we really certain that there's no risk associated with this construction? And, and this is likely one of several things that I wouldn't typically know to ask. And at the end of the day, it's a little unsettling because I'm really at the mercy of your expertise to evaluate and ascertain that there's no risk to this hill. And likely have no choice other than to follow your guidance. And so what can you tell me to ease my concerns about whether we've collectively done the due diligence to evaluate the structural integrity of the hill with this project?
Thank you very much. Can you just confirm what address you were at?
223 Marina Vista sits on the same hill right above the, the, the house.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reese. Any more questions on Zoom? Or any more comments? Nope, that's it. Okay. So just based on the comments I heard, can I just ask three questions? One is construction noise was raised on that. I know we have a construction management plan. Is there something unusual about this construction is going to be any more loud than a standard construction project?
Not that I'm aware of. No. I've been, to your point, this, they have a construction management plan and the city has a noise ordinance that limits construction hours to, well, not 24/7, but you know, throughout the week.
Okay, is your microphone on? Yeah. Oh, it is. Okay. Yeah. All right. Okay. And then I know they're taking out 14, 14 trees, right? Is that what I read? But I know there's trees going back in. So can you confirm?
There are a number of trees going back in. I don't have the number off the top of my head here.
Because all the, from what I understood, all the redwood trees were staying in place. They were taking out the bay laurels and some of the oak trees. And they were, they were plantings and it was in one of these.
There's 12 replacement trees proposed.
There are 12 replacement trees.
And then a number of other, you know, landscaping, shrubs, bushes and whatnot.
Okay. Okay. And then the other comment I heard was
Oh, no.
No trees. Okay. Was about the flammable materials, the fact that this house going in could increase the risk of fire traveling through this space. That it, the flammable materials in this building were going to be, if I understood the comment correctly, the, the flammable, but the, the house, the, the materials of this house was going to be more flammable than the trees that were already there. So I want to ask that question and say, is that, is that true? Is that a true concern?
Can I, can I ask the architect speak to that? Is that okay?
That's fine.
That is not true.
Well, it was raised and I want to make sure I clarify that because somebody clearly raised it. And if that's not true, let's correct it. If that is true, then we should address it. So.
So it's, it, it's not a one-to-one comparison. To have a one-to-one comparison, we would need to take every bed sheet, every, you know, jar of flour, every cabinet that's built to understand. And then we would need to take every piece of unkept brush from this vacant lot for the past few years. And we would need to add it up. So the actual, if you put these side by side and did them in a controlled burn, which one would burn better? Is a comparison that's actually quite difficult, but the reality is that's not what's going to happen. The reality is we're creating a structure that has not only a fireproof and fire retardant shell, but it also is creating a fire retardant site. So when we talk about the new trees we're putting on there, they actually meet the new recent stricter fire codes that have been implemented because of some of these very serious tragedies. Many of these fire code requirements for certain types of trees allowed, certain types that aren't allowed, distances within property lines, distances within homes. All of these have been implemented actually pretty recently because of many of these tragedies that have been mentioned on this call. And then when it comes to the main structure, you can't think of it as, okay, we've penetrated the main structure and now this is just spreading fire. Because the fact of the matter is we're set back from safer distances from any other structure. We're not brush that's up against the property line that would easily carry fire from one structure through our property. We're set back safely. We have siding material that resists ashes, that resists spreading fire. And we have roof material that also resists that. So it's not, I think the actual comparison of one to the other isn't the actual best way to look at it. The best way to look at it is would the structure catch, would the site catch? And by that means the site will absolutely be safer for both the neighborhood and the site itself for catching fire.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that comment.
And if I'm reading the drawings correctly, the, the siding is stucco and the roofing is metal?
Yes, that's correct. It's a metal roofing that matches all fire codes.
And presumably you have interiors fire sprinklers also.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Thank you for addressing those questions.
I did just want to address the last comment that we heard about the geotech report and just state that the city does have a third party geotech consultant that peer reviewed all of that work and found that it complied. He had no issues with it.
Oh, so it already has been peer reviewed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That was going to be.
And if I could add just one tiny little bit on top of that too. We're at the planning phase right now. So we are doing those structural studies, but we're about to, fingers crossed, go to the next phase of review, which is going to be an extremely, extremely in-depth review of structural, of the site, of structural systems. Every single structural portion of this project is going to be reviewed, both the site and the structure itself. So right now we're in the planning. We're talking about the size, the location, bring up a lot of really great concerns. But this is not the end of our review. This is not a, it's safe, you know, you know, go ahead and build it. There's still so much work for our team to do to absolutely make sure the structure is safe and meets all requirements, both building, fire, mechanical, public works, all of that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments that have not already been addressed?
I'll just note that one of the Zoom commentators did re-raise their hand. I don't know if you'd like to.
Who's that Ted Ridgway? Is that Mr. Ridgway? If you want to just make your comment really short, like just less than a minute, then I'm happy.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate it. But I think since my assertion was called into question, I, I'm owed this. And I'll just put it really succinctly so that the architect can come back with whatever data that they have. This is a question of fuel load in an area. This is a very small lot. This is a very big house for that. We calculate that the fire flammable load on this lot right now is 15,000 pounds. We calculate that a house this size, 2,900 square feet will contain 76,500 pounds of wood. That includes the framing, the sheathing, the cabinetry and the flooring. It does not include the bed sheets. It does not include the flower jar. Those will burn. And if you look at a picture of Altadena today, or if you look at a picture of Palisades today, you will see that absolutely everything that is built burns except the brick chimney. And they had fire retardant structures and they had metal roofs and they had sprinklers in those houses. And there is absolutely nothing left. And if you read the reports, this was not about tree to tree spreading. This was house to house, embers in the eaves spreading. That's how it happens. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much for that comment. Okay. All right. I guess we can bring it back to the commission for discussion. You want to start?
All right, I'll start. This is again, for me is, is a tough one because it's a, because we have a slope ordinance and we run into this every time we have a house on a steep slope. And I happen to like the house. On a flat lot, it would conform in terms of FAR. On a steeper lot, it's basically a five-bedroom house on a small, very steep site. So in the best of all worlds, I would like to see it smaller. But on the other hand, you know, if we, if we decide that, we need to give you some direction because, you know, how much smaller is okay. And I think you've done a nice job. I listened to the, to the talk about fuel loads and that's true of every house that's up there. So, you know, this is a buildable site in theory. And that was allowed for when it was created. So so I, you know, again, if, if it could be a little bit smaller, it's basically, like I said, a five-bedroom house. And on the other hand, a couple of hundred square feet probably in the scheme of things isn't going to make any difference. So here we are with the same kind of situation we've had in the past. You know, how, how small is small enough? So I haven't quite decided yet. I'll let, I'll hear what other people have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm up. Definitely. It feels like it's too big for the site. And so one of the things that I keep wondering is, do you really need the JADU? But then it looks like, if I understand the drawing correctly, that that's right above the garage. So then I'm like, well, okay, then, you know, if you made that home, would you be cutting somewhere else? Probably not. You know, listening to the people who have called in or stood up. You know, I know according to the city staff, you know, neighbors like 223 Marina Vista has a 7,000 square foot lot, a 2,856 square foot house on a 57.57 slope. So it's like, okay, that got approved at one point. You know, yours is 662 square foot lot that's larger. The overall house is only eight more square feet. Your slope is point zero two less. So it's like, okay, if we've had this precedent on the next door neighbor's house, you know, is it fair to not give it? And so that's what I'm struggling with. I understand the concerns for fire. Honestly, that's a concern we have in this entire town. I think every single person who comes to us to complain about what the neighbors are going to do raises fire. We're aware of fire. I know I've had to, you know, remove a ton of things and I got a stupid tract house in Greenbree. You know, but, you know, so I think fire, you know, to me is kind of, you know, yeah, it's a concern, but it's kind of, it's kind of what we're all dealing with. So I don't really take that as strongly into consideration. I mean, certainly the building materials, you know, are a factor. Now I'm really, really struggling with this. I think for me, you know, just again, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, just looking at, you know, reading the geotechnical reports. I mean, we have to believe that they are, they know what they're doing. I certainly don't know what they're doing. I wouldn't build there, but that's me personally. So I can't tell you no, because that's not my right. Yeah, I'm still ruminating.
Thank you. This is hard for us because we're just down to three. I wish we're all, all five of us were up here, but my main concern on this was the, the effect on the natural landscape and of the safety issues here more than anything else. The sea, how it's going to impact the neighbors, how it's going to impact the land, how it's going to road the hillside, how it was going to affect fire and emergency vehicles getting in, which is why I've kept asking the same questions in various different forms and and having gone out there and looked at it, I know I wouldn't want to live on that hillside, but every question I've asked has had an adequate answer. And I've heard a good, you know, it's obvious, I now I've heard it's been peer reviewed. That was going to be my one suggestion was we take all the, the, the studies and have them peer reviewed by staff. But it sounds like that's already been done. So that makes me feel a lot more comfortable. And at the end of the day, we can, all we can do is trust the experts. I am, I mean, with modern day materials, I know there's a, there's a lot that goes into making a house more fireproof than it, than the, the older properties were. So that also gives me some comfort too. So my biggest concern on this property, I think, has been allayed. And I'm reassured to see that that's not the end of the investigations. There's going to be more that's going to, going to happen. So really now it just comes down to design and the various variances that we, we had to, we have to address here tonight. Now, in terms of a design review, I don't have any, any issues with, I think it's an attractive design. And I think I may have mentioned in this and the last one as well. And I think you've done a good job compared to the last time you came in. What I am hearing from the commission and from I said, commenters is that the house is still too big. Maybe I don't feel as strongly as those, but if we decide to reduce the size, I think we can give you some very, we will try and do our best to give you very clear feedback on how to reduce it. And it may be, maybe as a commission, we could look at the, the comments that were given to us by staff on the, on page three. I don't know if, if maybe the first comment there about the using form as a bay projection is maybe that's something that we can look at and see if there's by incorporating those design features in our guidelines. We could reduce the size and I'm looking at you, Commissioner Wagstaff as, as our architect. But at page three of, of the staff report, there were a couple of comments there that about having this design conform to our guidelines. With regard, the other variances that were requested, Commissioner Wagstaff already addressed the FAR. And this is one that as a commission, we need to look at because every time we're on a hillside, we've, they've come in and asked for an exception. So in theory, some of these requests for exceptions would go away in the future. So my, again, the one that worried me the most was the natural state. But I've tried to ask as many questions as I can here tonight to see if I can make, make sure that I haven't missed anything here. So I'm getting answers to everything. And then the variance for the, the side yard setback is really just for the staircase. And that sounds like that's a necessary one we have to put in. So I'm, I'm not going to have an objection to that. So the question is, do we?
I, I think, I think one of the things that, that I would be concerned about in Owleswood, you know, I've driven up that street a few times. I actually did a house on Owleswood. But anyway, I think the fact that you have such a broad driveway and, and a two-car garage actually is an asset to the neighbors in general. And the, the only downside in a small street is when you have an ADU, you have potentially more cars. And I'm wondering how important the ADU is in this particular instance. So that's just a.
Can we open it up to and just ask them, what is your intention with this JADU? Like, are you renting it out or are you putting a family member in there or what are you planning to do with it? Like, are you renting it out or are you putting a family member in there? Or what are you planning to do with it? If you can.
Honestly, it was about optionality. You know, be able to rent it out. And, you know, again, I go back to we're in a housing crisis and not to, I'm sure everyone uses that, but I thought, how can I solve this problem a little bit? And, you know, help me pay for the house. So I think it was, in my mind, is I put a small unit there. I have, if I need my mother to live with us, or if I have, or if I want additional income, there's just all that optionality that you have with a junior ADU or an ADU. So I looked at it that way, just like, okay, there's just options for my family on that respect. I think you had another question. Is it that important? I mean, I could take that square footage and then it wouldn't be in this conversation. I could just come back and come back with ADU. And I didn't want to do that. I didn't want to misrepresent what I wanted to do. I wanted to be upfront and say, look, this is my intent. I'd rather just do it now and be honest with my neighbors and not elongate the construction time. And obviously, that would be more cost for me, you know. But I thought it just made sense. And, and you know, I'll be the landlord. So whoever decides to be living there, and if it's a tenant, then I ask them to park down on Chevy Chase, and then there's not an issue.
So I do want to address that. I mean, that actually is a something which, as of right, any property owner can put an ADU in. And we can't control that, unfortunately, as a commission or the staff. It's a state law requirement. So I do appreciate you raising that and putting in the plans today. Question for staff is, can we put any kind of restrictions on parking on the JD, JADU?
You have no discretion over the JADU.
That's what I thought.
There's, if you're interested in the details, if you do it at the same time as building a residence, the state law says you don't have to provide additional parking.
And that no parking is required for the JADU and the state? For example, that was a reason why they won't let us ban them in areas where we're concerned about evacuation, because they say that no one's going to be having a car if they don't have parking.
Yeah, I mean, that's the concern is you could have a couple living there that have two cars. So now you have a house with kids and and a very, very narrow street. That concerns me, but I know we don't have any say over JADUs. And I do actually appreciate the fact that you showed it, you brought it forth.
Right. And that is something I'm learning now, is that we've approved properties here that have come in for the commission, and then they'll get their approval. Then at a later date, they'll add an ADU. So suddenly, what they're representing here to us and to staff, then is something different from what they actually build, because then they build the house and an additional ADU. And that is a state requirement to try and resolve the housing crisis that we're in right now. So what are we going to do tonight?
I think I've sort of talked myself into making a motion to approve the project, as is. I don't actually think cutting two hundred square feet out of it makes any real difference. And I think you've covered the bases. I think it's a handsome house. We run into this on every slope. So that's where I am.
I just have actually one quick question for staff. In the, in your report, you say that the natural state is point six four. In the agenda, it says it's point six seven?
I would probably, I would go off the report. I may have done the math.
Yeah, I was originally thinking, okay, you know, maybe if you cut the ADU out, the JADU out, you know, but because of where it's located, right above the garage, it doesn't really make that much of a difference to cut it out, because you're still, you know, you would have it as part of the house. You're not necessarily going to cut from the other, the rest of the house design, because that changes.
And you could just build it.
You could just build it the next day, yeah. Yeah, we could say, yeah, make that, and then they would have something else. And, I mean, and I know, I mean, the audience, I don't think knows, but, I mean, you know, the FAR is, especially with the slopes, that's something that I know that we are going to be having study sessions on down the road, because we keep having this problem. The variance for the staircase, because it is essentially ordered by the fire department, I think we have to give that. The variance for the natural state at point six four, that seems like quite a bit to me. I understand it's supposed to be point eight. It's a difference of twelve hundred and ten feet. I don't have that much of a problem with that. So, and the slope use permit, I mean, obviously, that's how much needs to be cut away. And that's less than, I think, the original design had.
So if, and can we make it a condition of approval that you talked about earlier, that if they have to make more cut, they would have to come back to you? So your comment that you made earlier, I don't know how that would work impact this. So it was something you raised.
I made the building permit submittal. They wouldn't submit detailed grading calculations. And we could have someone review them to ensure they're correct and that they, that they're correct.
Also, it could be, it could be a conditional use on the construction of the project, because there's already tracking management for any sort of waste that's brought off the site. This typically happens in demolished sites that you have to demolish or basically dispose of materials in a sustainable way. So there already is a tracking system set up for that. And what could be set up is some sort of system along those lines where basically if some threshold is hit, or if some reporting is not, that it goes back into being studied. So some sort of conditional approval that this will be tracked in some means and manners that goes along with what we've submitted.
I think that needs to be monitored. That was a concern raised. That needs to be monitored and confirmed. And then
I think that's impossible for.
Is that impossible?
We can't sit out there and watch trucks go away.
And the reality is, the reality is, what do you do at that point?
I mean, we can calculate how much grading is involved in a project. And then you know how many trucks estimated will be leaving and coming to the site for that. So verifying that the grading is the same when it comes to building permit, I think is as much as we can do, but we can't count the cars coming to the site.
Public comment has closed, unfortunately. Right. And I, and I don't think what okay, and I don't think we're going to do that anyway. So that's not going to be, that's not going to be raised.
Just a quick question about the grading, though. Are you going to slide it down to Chevy Chase? Is that the intent or bring it uphill or what? What's the?
In projects of this scale, it's specifically when cutting into a site like this, there aren't just building plans that are approved. There's actually shoring up plans that are approved, as well as the construction management plan for noise, as well as construction waste management plan. So all of that will actually be in correspondence with the building department and inspectors. I myself am not a contractor, so I don't know what would be the least impact for both the site, the neighbors. But we're never allowed to block any sort of fire access, and it would be the safest, easiest route for, you know, everyone involved.
And then the additional investigations that the architect mentioned that was going, that were going to happen, are they being submitted to staff for review?
I would be, it would all happen as a component of the building permit application. So it will be reviewed again.
It will be. So the staff are still involved. So maybe not you guys, but it would be the building department still have a say in what the results of these investigations. So if something comes up at a later date, there is a safety issue?
If I, if I made to our, if for some reason our structural engineer designed a structural system that would require more cut, it would then change that number, which would then get resubmitted to planning. It would never be like, nothing would sneak by if something did change.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so this, it's still, the additional investigations is coming back to us. Okay, not to us, but to staff.
And it says in the conditions of approval under Department of Public Works conditions number eight, please be aware, the preliminary grading and drainage plan approved as part of the design review application may require revisions prior to issuance of a burning permit. So they have to have, it has to show the cut and fill earth volumes, the perimeter pad grade, slopes away from foundations and site drainage. So they have to do all of that.
Okay. I mean, my main concerns were safety. I've asked every question I can ask, so I don't have anything further to raise. So it's really, are you comfortable making motion?
I think I am.
Did I start the motion, though?
You did start the motion, right?
Okay, I mean, it was pretty loosey-goosey. I'll do a better job. So I move approval of twenty-three forty-five, twenty-one Chevy Chase Court. Design review, the variance to allow a side yard setback of zero, where ten feet is required by code for the staircase, a variance of the natural state for area ratio exception and slope use permit.
We have a second?
A second.
Did you want to include the condition about returning to the commission if there's a further cut or fill proposed?
I think we should. Yes. Yeah, we should. And before you leave, there is a ten-day appeal period.
I can't believe you people are good conscience for approving this monstrosity. Blood's under your hands when you're creating an unsafe condition.
All right, thank you.
And dude, we're not over, man. We can do everything in our power and they not make this happen.
Okay. Welcome to the neighborhood. Well, we haven't, let's finish the motion. Okay, we're not there yet. So go ahead. A vote.
Okay. Commissioner Hall.
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff, yes, and Chair Chalmers.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second. Yeah. So the motion passes three zero two recusals and the approval is subject to a ten-day appeal period.
Thank you. Work with your neighbors the best you can. That's all I can say. You're going to be living there with your I know.
I can only do so much to communicate to them and ask for their I honestly, it's disappointing that I sent out these letters and say, here I am, come talk to me. And then this comes, and this is the only way I can have a conversation. And it's a lot of paper relief. It's not about like constructive criticism of a project. I would happily taken in a lot of feedback, but then it comes to the table. I can't have conversations.
So, okay, so you've reached out to them already, and this is the first time you're speaking with them, you're saying. Okay.
Sent my email, they never responded. So yeah.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you all. Apology they could not be there in person. Really appreciate the questions tonight.
Okay, I'm going to welcome Chair Swisher back to the podium to continue the meeting. But while he's walking up here, do we have an agenda? The next item on the agenda is a general plan conformity finding for the conveyance of eighty square feet. And it sounds like this item is going to be continued?
Yeah, it'll be continued to the next planning commission meeting on twenty-second, April twenty-second.
All right, thank you. In that case, we can close the public portion of the meeting and just move to business items. And then I'll have Chair Swisher.
All right.
Take over.
Business items, we have to approve the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission Meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, Planning Commissioners' reports. Are there any Planning Commissioners' reports?
I just have the question. I know we got something, I still have it in my binder from February about the FAR.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
We need to put that.
Yeah, because this is coming up a lot, and we keep saying the same thing.
We've received just a huge number of applications within the last probably three or four weeks. Like brand-new homes, numerous ones. There's just not going to be any time on an agenda to have that come back anytime soon. Well, so we're expecting April and May to be very full planning commission meetings with all these applications. But then after that, if they don't keep rolling in at the same pace as they are right now, hopefully, we can, we can pick it up after we get through this wave of applications.
Are these new homes?
Many of them are new homes or else really substantial remodels.
Okay.
We, that does need to be addressed, though, because it's just, it's impossible to deal with this every
I agree. And we've been here several years now, and it's been, yeah.
If we could squeeze it on sometime, we'll try.
Okay.
But there's just, there's a lot of work that we're trying to do for the other applications to keep them rolling along.
Okay.
I don't think a lot of them are hillside lots, though. Oh, no, they are. They are.
All right. So other than that, any other Planning Commissioners' reports?
The next meeting is twenty-second? Okay.
Twenty-second of
April, we're canceling the second one.
I'll be gone then, yeah. It's spring break.
I'll make a motion to
Okay, fine, go ahead.
And I think there's a presentation of a giant check to, from the TCF to the city for the library coming up April fourth or something like that.
I think that's correct.
Yeah. So it's getting built.
I know, I can see it.
Sam, I saw the foundation is going in.
Yeah.
There's something, I think some donor may be giving a substantial amount of money for landscaping.
Excellent.
I've heard, I don't know the exact details, but I've heard say that that's possible.
Seventy-one, seventy-five percent of the
Larkspur. That's exactly right.
That's nice.
All right, can I see, have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
That was, that was hard.